Good afternoon to everyone. This is a meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission, and I'm calling this meeting to order. First item that we have is roll call.
It has no Vialreal.
Present.
Jose Tez.
Present.
Carlos Flores. Javier Compean.
Present.
Raúl Lu Galde.
Present.
Johnny Narváez. Joel Vialreal.
Present.
Daniel López. Jorge Domínguez.
Present.
For the record, Mr. Chairman, you do have four.
Thank you.
I'd like to make motion to excuse Mr. López.
And...
Mr. Narváez.
Mr. Narváez.
Second motion.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you. The next item that we have is... Could everybody please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. The next item that we have is the consideration of the approval of the minutes of July the 19th and August the 2nd.
Mr. Chairman, we're gonna have to table the minutes for August the 2nd if one's ready yet.
Do we need a motion?
We have a motion?
Motion.
We have a second?
Second.
And a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you. The next item that we have is public hearings. First public hearing that we have is amending the zoning ordinance of the city of Laredo by rezoning approximately 19.179 acres, Portion 37, Abstract 410, de José Baroto, Chapa, Villa Mosa, 2 Track 5, located south of Soria Drive and east of US Highway 83, from R3 to R1A. This is a public hearing. Anyone who wishes to speak in favor?
Mr. Chairman, way announced, Portos announced, engineering commissioners. We're here in favor of this zone change. We understand that the existing zone change is a R3 of higher density, but we're looking at something that will match the areas to the north and to the east that are R1A, buffered down to the bottom. We think it's a really good fit for this area. It's all... We're surrounded by single-family homes, and we'd like to continue that on this side of the channel, and we hope that you agree with us. Thank you.
Anybody have any questions? The commission? Thank you. This is a public hearing. Anybody who wishes to speak in favor of the zone change? In favor of the zone change? I'm sorry.
Orlando Navarro for the record. Just to reiterate what the engineer's talking about. If you could look at this design, on one side you have a channel. On the bottom side you have detention pond, and then you have Soria. Towards the back end you have mobile homes. So what we did was we buffered this development so that it doesn't have that connection to the mobile home. To the north of it, those are houses, so we're trying to keep it the same pattern. So that's basically what we're trying to do.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else who wishes to speak in favor of the zone change? In favor of the zone change? Anybody who wishes to speak against the zone change? Against the zone change? What are the wishes of the commission?
I have a question for staff. So the only reason is because it doesn't comply with the comprehensive plan, right? It's high density?
That's correct.
But the description for high density... It also includes, but can also include, single-family homes and small lots. Right?
That's correct.
So, can it or cannot?
According to the comprehensive plan, the new comprehensive plan, they don't... It doesn't go according with the zone change. But we... You requested previously for us to state what would be the reasons for us to see that it could work, or what would we suggest? And that's why you have the recommendation based on the comp plan, which we're not going against, and why we would keep... We consider it appropriate at that.
Okay.
Want to make a comment? That area has been a trend, a development, and actually what the engineer mentioned, it goes, it concurs to the area. Now, staff, it's... Even though they don't support the area, the change, they consider the proposed zone change appropriate. So if I could make a motion, I would like to make a motion to approve this zone change based on the staff noted that it... The proposed zone change is appropriate for that area.
A motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
And a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those against? Motion carries, thank you very much. The next item is a public hearing. Amending the zoning ordinance to the city of Laredo by rezoning approximately 5.26 acres, Portion 35, Abstract 546, Jose M. Diaz original, located west of Katrina Drive from R1 to R1A. This is a public hearing. Anybody who wishes to speak in favor of the zone change? In favor of the zone change?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. Frank Estrela with Sherfy Engineering, here to speak in favor of the proposed zone change and answer any questions that you may have.
Does anybody on the commission have any questions for Mr. Estrada at this time? Thank you.
Thank you.
This is a public hearing. Anybody who wishes to speak in favor? In favor of the zone change? In favor of the zone change? Anybody who wishes to speak against the zone change? Against the zone change? If not, what are the wishes of the commission?
Make a motion and close public hearing, support staff's recommendation, and approve the zone change.
Second.
A motion and a second? All those in favors?
Aye.
All those against? Motion carries, thank you. Next item that we have is... Public hearing amending the zoning ordinance to the city of Laredo by rezoning approximately 7.4 acres in Portion 35, Abstract 546, Jose M. Diaz original, located south of Texas Avenue and west of Katrina Drive from R1 to R1A. This is a public hearing. Anybody who wishes...
Mr. Chairman, there is an update on this zone case.
Okay.
We received one letter in opposition.
One in... Did you receive any in favor?
No in favor.
None?
None.
Out of the 37, just one in opposition?
That's correct.
And the staff does support the zone change?
Correct.
Okay. This is a public hearing. Anybody who wishes to speak in favor? In favor of the zone change?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. Frank Estrada with Sherfy Engineering, and like to speak in favor of this item and answer any questions that you have.
Thank you, Mr. Estrada. Anybody who wishes to speak in favor of the zone change? In favor of the zone change? Anybody who wishes to speak against the zone change? Against the zone change? If not, what are the wishes of the commission?
Make a motion and close public hearing, support staff recommendation, and approve the zone change.
Second.
We have a motion and a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those against? Motion carries, thank you. Next item that we have is public hearing amending the zoning ordinance to the city of Laredo by rezoning approximately 1.6432 acre tract, Portion 31, Abstract 31. Steam, that's not right. Jay Trevino original, located at 4200 Jaime Zapata Memorial Highway from R3 to B1 and to B3 and to B4. The staff does not support the proposed zone changes. This is a public hearing. Anybody who wishes to speak in favor of the zone changes? In favor of the zone changes?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Fred Guerra with Guerra Engineering, here to speak in favor and, you know, support this zone change. It's a proposed furniture store that they want to build at this site, and they want to have some outdoor furniture, so that requires a B4.
So you're pulling...
They're asking for your support.
Let's see if I understand this. From R3 to B1, a B3, and a B4? Is that what you're asking for, or just a B4?
No, we're asking for a B4.
So this is your request?
So why is...
Existing zoning is... There's three zones right now. It's R3, B1, and B3.
Okay, I got you. I got you. There's an R3, there's a B1, and a B3. And you're requesting a B4 from all those? Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, I understand it. Thank you. Okay. Any questions for Mr. Guerra from the commission? Thank you, Mr. Guerra. This is a public hearing. Anybody who wishes to speak in favor of the zone change? In favor of the zone change? Anybody who wishes to speak against the zone change? Against the zone change?
Excuse me, is this a one...
Yes, yes ma'am.
Okay, I have a property of 2218 with 20, or Jaime Zapata?
Yes, ma'am.
Ma'am, your name for the record?
Esther Sompas.
Thank you.
It's a new Esther fault, if they don't count. Okay, my question was, is it gonna be a furniture store? Or they can do whatever for a B4?
Well, once you change the zone to a B4, anything that is in a B4 zone can go in there.
Okay, can they...
The individual that just addressed the commission, Mr. Guerra, indicated right now that it was gonna be a furniture store.
Hey, can they put a cap, like if it's a furniture store? Because I'm right next to it, and I'm a B3.
I'm sorry, can they put a cap? Or what do you mean?
Like just...
Limits, limitation.
Limitations, thank you.
That would be a conditional use.
I was just, you know, stating the fact, because, you know, I was doing some research and...
So you're speaking against it?
Yes. Thank you.
Anybody else who wishes to speak against the zone change? Against the zone change? If not, what are the wishes of the commission?
Can I have a question for staff?
Yes, sir.
Did anybody ask traffic how this is going to affect that intersection? There's a stoplight right in front of their... And the property next to it, Paulitas, has those prongs sticking up that prohibit you from turning left. You're gonna put in a B4, a big B4, which at some day can turn into whatever it wants to turn into, where it really can't turn left, which would be east, northeast, onto Jaime Zapata. Essentially be forced to be like a one-way. And since traffic seems to be so preoccupied with entrances and exits near intersections, I would think that they'd make a comment about this one.
Typically, traffic will not make comments for zone cases. They'll do that in the plating, but not necessarily in the zone cases. What'll happen with respect to any development that occurs there, there will follow the standard spacing that is normally applied to development. 125-foot or more.
But when this property was made, or platted originally, there was no media, I don't believe. The Jaime Zapata predated those offshoots, and so you're not gonna have the intersections that were there.
Correct. Again, what will end up happening is they'll probably be required to move their driveway. First of all, that's a spur. It's a state spur. So state's gonna, I believe, have some say into what goes there. I don't think it's just the traffic department. My recollection is that that spur... You remember from another one, 240 or...
240.
240.
Spur 240.
So that's a state roadway, just the same as Clark is from Arkansas to the Loop. So the access management will be conducted by...
Textile.
But you already have an entrance that's there, and if I'm... I don't remember how... The last time I've been to Paulitas, which was fairly recently, that stoplight is very close to that entrance and exit. And it makes it a difficult left-hand turn. It makes it essentially where you can only go right.
Well, I think what'll happen is Textile's gonna look at each one of those entrances and decide whether or not it was a permitted entrance. If it's not a permitted entrance, they're gonna make them go back and re-permit.
Well, once again, the... But the problem is these properties are really... Like that property's been there for a fairly long period of time, and at some point they probably predated... I mean, Jaime Zapata wasn't always a Texas spur.
It was the Loop.
It was just a local...
It was the Loop back then. It's been that way for a long time.
No, it's been state property. It was the Loop.
It's a state. It's a state. I mean, the state didn't just take it over. It's been there for a good long while. Probably back to the 60s maybe?
Probably.
Yeah. So, I mean, I think that's what's gonna end up happening, is the state will have... They'll have to go to the state and discuss that with them.
That's what I was gonna say. I mean, this becomes an issue for the state to either move driveways if they need to for traffic control purposes, or they could even ask for other things, like acceleration lanes. But that's a state call.
A lot of times what happens too is you'll end up with a segment similar to what you have on US 59 between Bartlett and Arkansas.
This property's also not planted.
Any other questions from the commission for staff or anyone? If not, what are the wishes of the commission?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the zone change.
Second that motion.
We have a motion and a second? All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All those against by saying nay? A, two, we have one, two, three, four, five. Motion carries, thank you. Next item is the public hearing amending the zoning ordinance of the city of Laredo by rezoning Lot 1, Block 1, Las Blancas Residential Subdivision, located at 8201 Mejia Road from R1A to B3. This is a public hearing. Anyone who wishes to speak in favor? In favor of the zone change?
Mr. Chairman, you have an updated copy for that zone case.
Okay.
Regarding the letters, there's no update.
I'm sorry? I didn't hear.
Regarding the letters, there's no update.
No update on the letters? But your recommendation's still the same? Staff does not support the zone change, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay.
The exhibits were wrong, and that's why we're turning it out.
Okay. All right. This is a public hearing. Anybody who wishes to speak in favor? In favor of the zone change?
Good evening. My name is Juan Salinas, and I'm here to speak in favor of the proposed zone change. It's an R1A to a B3. And just south of the property, it's a B3. And on the other side of the highway, just west of it, there's a B4. And that unplanted, or zone tract up there, I guess it's not annexed, that's where Anderson Columbia has a yard out there. The property's over on 359, just about a half mile or quarter mile just west of the new flea market out there, Las Blancas. And the proposed use here, it's gonna be a light commercial use. I think the gentleman sells windows. So he was gonna have his window shop, or partial windows for buildings. And I think the staff was not in support, I think for the same, that it wasn't in conformance with the comprehensive plan. There are several other comments in there where I think the staff recognized that it would be appropriate at this location.
Okay.
Yeah, that's true.
If anybody had any questions, yes?
Yes, Mr. Salinas. I know that area, and I'm familiar that they had that pool for a long time. Why now we're coming? Was that... Were they approached by the city to comply with certain regulations? Or just they're just renewing the conditional use permit?
No, this is actually a... This is a...
This is a zone change.
There's nothing there for... I think that... I think the packet was incorrect when it went out. Yes, sir.
No problem. Thank you. Got different stuff here. Thank you.
Any other questions, Mr. Salinas?
Thank you.
Thank you.
This is a public hearing. Anyone who wishes to speak in favor of the zone change? In favor of the zone change? Anybody who wishes to speak against the zone change? Against the zone change? Against the zone change? Not? What are the wishes of the commission?
Make a motion to close public hearing and go against staff recommendation and approve the zone change.
We have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second motion.
And a second? All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Those against? We have one against. Motion carries, thank you. Next item that we have is a public hearing amending the zoning ordinance met by the city of Laredo by authorizing a conditional use permit for a children's amusement services outdoors. Lots 7 and 8, Block 2, San José subdivision, located at 6321 and 6323, Casa del Sol Boulevard. This is a public hearing. Anybody who wishes to speak in favor of the zone change? In favor of the zone change? Of the conditional use permit, I'm sorry.
Good evening. My name's Isaac Leendo. I'm the owner of the establishment right there. I'm applying for a CUP permit for the Mission Center. I already had it, but they only gave it for me for one year, so I'm trying to renew it again.
When did your CUP end?
Excuse me?
When did your CUP end?
2016.
2016?
Yes.
And you were not notified that it ended, or what happened?
Well, the first time I wasn't even notified that I had it, because they tabled my item and I had left the meeting. And then I was notified by Mr. Edgar.
Okay. Do you... I know that one of the issues there a long time ago was...
The issue is parking.
Yes, sir. Did you take care of that, or how are you gonna take care of that?
Well, we already tried to take care of that, looking for a property right next to it or something, buy it, and there's nobody selling. I mean, of the neighborhood, I don't have problems with them. It's only one person in the whole neighborhood.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions?
Real quick.
Mr. Leendo? Yes?
It was just the same that I was asking the engineer. You had it for a long time, and apparently to the comments that you had people that are complaining about the noise and about the long hours.
Well, I haven't had any complaints about the noise. I've only had one person complain about the parking, and he lives like around a block and a half from there. Because he said that he couldn't reach the mailboxes. The mailboxes are in the corner. I mean, they're about half a block away from there.
How long you had that?
I bought it about three years ago.
About three years?
Yeah. And mostly we use it in the summertime, May through October. That's mostly the business times that it's used.
Mr. Chairman, one question. If we deny the conditional permit, what happens with that? What... Will the city close on them? What action will be taken by the city?
Mr. Braden?
Sure. If you deny it, he'll have a right to appeal your decision to the city council. The city council will decide whether or not it is appropriate to grant a conditional use permit or not.
They will not fall on their grandfather anymore, right?
Absolutely not.
Okay. Thank you, sir. That was exactly my question.
I have one other question, I think. How many times has this property come up where it has been cited?
Twice.
We have the zoning officer here.
It's been cited at least three times. I wanna say one in 2016 and two this year.
Two this year?
Yeah.
So in 2017, they were not cited at all?
No.
So two this year? And how frequent were those two?
One in May and one in June. One citation in May and one in June.
Back-to-back months?
Yeah, just before I applied for the permit again.
Yeah, before he applied. And the violations were insufficient parking.
How many parking spaces do you have, Mr. Leendo?
We have around...
Six.
Six on the...
Six parking space.
But they're around eight.
Maybe it's an eight, there's only two.
They're asking for 30.
Edgar has a... It was... They had a citation during the period.
Does anybody else have any questions for Mr. Leendo from the commission?
No.
Thank you, Mr. Leendo.
I have a question for the office.
For staff? Yes, go ahead.
So the citations were for just for the lack of parking?
Well, actually, he was cited for insufficient parking and for operating a party place on residential zoning. Citation, one citation with two violations.
When was the first citation to this property issued?
The first one would be in, I wanna say, 2016, and then 2018 was in May.
And what was the citation in 2016?
For insufficient parking, because he already had the CUP.
And you have the date? Was it what month that was in?
No, I don't have the date.
What happened with this... I'm sorry. Go ahead. Real quick, Mr. Chairman. What happens in this instance is, Mr. Chairman, is that we have an area for recreation of the subdivision, but at the same time we create a problem with traffic. I've seen when they have the party there, and it actually inundates the streets around it because there are no parking. So it's... It's been there for many years, but it has not... Actually, it has never been in compliance. We really need to look at it by creating a... Something that works for the community, not a risk.
True.
That was my comment.
Okay.
By any chance...
Where does it say this?
The parking space in that colonial, like, everybody parks the streets. You go through there, there's about four cars, a trailer, and there's no parking anywhere on the colony. It's like a trailer park, something like that. Nobody has parking there.
Okay. All right, thank you. This is a public hearing. Anybody who wishes to speak in favor of the conditional use permit? In favor of the conditional use permit? Anybody who wishes to speak against the conditional use permit? Against the conditional use permit?
Mr. Chairman, he did have one violation on August 5th, 2016, which would have occurred during the time that he had a conditional use permit in effect. Why?
I have a question.
Mrs. CUP was granted on May 31st of 2016.
Okay, the violation, I mean, that was... That he was cited for, when he had a conditional use permit, was for what?
Insufficient parking.
Parking.
Not meeting the parking requirements under the CUP. Then after the CUP expired, he gets two more citations.
Okay. I'm sorry.
And just so that the commission understands, our office did send him by certified mail and regular mail on June 30th of 2017, a letter. It's part of your packet advising him that his CUP had expired.
Okay.
So we did send him...
Did send him notice, okay?
Certified and regular mail.
Commissioner Flores?
Looking at the CUP, if we grant it, if we approve it, it's gonna require him to come into compliance with the parking requirement, right? And that's what it says? Says...
Yes, sir. If the city council grants the conditional use permit...
Yeah, okay, all right. I have a question, though, because I think the other concern I have is that, let's say we approve it. Let's say, because, you know... In other words, I hope he understands that if we approve it, he still has to come into compliance with the parking requirement.
Right. If the council approves it, he will have to come in to comply.
But the second thing is, the other issue, and I think is a more important issue, is the fact that the CUP allows him to operate till midnight in the neighborhood. And I think one of the letters or one of the complaints talked about noise pollution or something. So I think I would be more comfortable modifying this to be till 10:00 PM, with the understanding that he has to come into compliance with the parking regulation. And if he can't do that, well, then he's not gonna be in compliance with the CUP and be able to operate.
Actually, that's certainly a condition that the commission can recommend to council.
If I can confer with you. What happened is that that particular area's got two swimming pools, and it's... The area where they could get the parking are very reduced. Actually, they got no place to grow. And that's the way it was created from the beginning. So if... I feel that if we grant the permit, he will still... And that's the way it was created from the beginning, so, uh, uh, if, I feel that if we grant the, uh, the, uh, the permit, he will still not be able to comply with the requirements, see, so.
If you look at the map, you know, of the subdivision, every lot is built out, okay? Parking requirement has to be within one thousand feet of a facility to be able to be affected. So if you look at the map right now and the way everything is built out, there's probably nothing within one thousand feet to comply with the requirement of parking.
Uh, let me ask this question, uh, let's say, I'm, I'm not familiar with the neighborhood, but, uh, would it be possible for him to find parking, let's say, not in the neighborhood, but like, you know, close enough from the neighborhood that he can walk to it?
It has to be within one thousand feet.
No, I understand that, I understand, I understand that's the requirement, I mean, obviously, a CUP is, you're going against the requirement, some, some of the requirements, right, in other words, you're, you're making some, um. You're making some exceptions, right, so what I'm asking is to look at it more, uh, conceptually, is there a place that's close enough that he would be able to get the parking there? And we can make that an exception in CUP, but with the prohibition that, under no circumstances can there be parking in the neighborhood?
The, I'm familiar with that area, because I was involved in part of the development of that area, so it was Mr. Danny Waters also, the, uh. It's one block from the highway, Highway fifty-nine, yes, uh, there's no parking, in that entrance, they can't park on either side, because that's actually the entrance, the ingress, neckris. Now, inside the subdivision, inside the subdivision, there's, uh, old mobile homes and, uh, there's, uh, there's a lot of need for parking as it is right now without them, them having the party place, so. The, the answer on my side would be no, there, there's no area where they could park, other than where, right adjacent to that, uh, to that, uh, pool area. But what you're thinking is correct, I mean, it's been there, so what are we gonna do, are we gonna cut him out and, uh, and what is he gonna do with the property, see? That property has been there for the last ten, fifteen years.
Property's been there since the subdivision was developed, because originally, that property was intended for the subdivision use.
It was an identity.
That's what it was for, it was intended for the subdivision use.
I wish there was a way to fit him in, but where the parking is close enough that it's not dangerous for people to walk.
There's some unplatted property just to the west of him, there's a big lot behind it, if you go to the next page, click on the next one. There's a big unplatted piece of property just south of the B three, which the B three abuts three fifty-nine. There's been, there's an availability for him to buy, if he really wants to, he can buy part of that property. Sure, you can see it right there, it says, uh, unplatted, right? And it's got access through, what is that? He, he may not even have to buy it, I mean, he might be able to lease it, I mean, it just depends, but I mean, there, there's a trap there that's, you know, remote, would, would, would be available possibly for remote parking.
I, I think, I think we should approve it, but we should clearly state that he's prohibited from having the parking be in the neighborhood. And if he can find, if he can find an area that's close enough, like in that unplatted area, I mean, let's do it, but, I mean, we put the onus on him to do that. But under no circumstances can he use the neighborhood. I don't know how we would modify that, but.
How would you enforce it? Well, we supposedly have an enforcement.
Yeah, well, we've got an officer here, he, he would enforce it. And then if in twelve months, we have citations, then we know that we're not gonna approve it again. You know, we give him an opportunity to solve the problem, he's got twelve, maybe we can even do less than twelve.
You had the same condition, the last time he was granted a CUP of parking.
Okay, well, then, let's deny it.
I mean, I, it's just, you know, I'm just.
Yeah, well, how about if we give him six months, can we modify the twelve, the, the, the timeframe, six months?
The, uh, the commission can recommend any timeframe to the city council that they feel is appropriate, whether the city council decides to act on that.
Why don't we do six months, you give him an option to, uh, use that somewhere that, in that unplatted area, uh, and if he's not able to come into compliance with the CUP within the next six months, then we can deny it at that, we can no longer renew it at that point. And it's a, it's a, it's a win-win.
All right.
Excuse me, six months, I ain't gonna have no citation, but it's gonna be closed for the next six months, we stop working in October, in September, last of September, I don't have no more parties.
Okay, well, that's fine.
I mean, I don't have no more parties passing September.
Right, but I guess the thing is, he can come back, eh, like in six months to get his renewal and say, here, I found this, I've got a lease for this property to rent, to park, I have this, I have that, in other words, we're giving you the timeframe in which to do it.
I mean, we've been looking for the past year, two years, you could have, I even asked it here for, uh, for a number for the property in front of me, because it looks abandoned, but they don't wanna sell. There's a property right in front of me, that's a mobile home, but they don't wanna sell.
We can.
We've been looking for the past two years.
So the only option is to deny it then?
I think we give him a chance to try to, we give you some more time.
Let's do this, let me just finish up, uh, with a public hearing, and then somebody can make a motion, okay? This is a public hearing for this conditional use permit, anybody who wishes to speak against, against the conditional use permit, against the conditional use permit? Okay, what are the wishes of the commission?
I make a motion that we close public comment and we modify the proposed CUP to require that he only operate from twelve P M, I'm sorry, from. Twelve P M to ten P M, one, two, that he's prohibited from using parking in the neighborhood. Three, that the CUP is only for a six-month period, and four, that he finds an alternate parking solution within that timeframe.
Question, we have a motion.
I have a question, clarification, prohibited from using parking in the neighborhood, what do you mean by that?
Street parking.
So that he not avail himself of on-street parking?
Well, what, what is he allowed to do?
He's allowed to use it if it's in excess of thirty. On-street parking? Anybody can park on the street?
Public street.
Okay, well, hold on, hold on, what is off-site, what is, you have.
Off-site means that you provide the parking off.
Off the street?
Off the street.
Okay, so we can prohibit him from using parking in the neighborhood, is what you're saying?
You, you can, you can, as a practical matter, you can, I mean, you can, you can put that in there, but how do you enforce that? I mean, it's not like the cars that are parked there are gonna have some kind of sticker on them that say, I don't belong here, you know, I mean.
But then the way that you regulate it is you just say, if you don't have thirty parking spaces, you're done.
That's usually the way it's done, yeah, you say, you don't have, you can't demonstrate that you have enough parking, uh, you know, off the street, um, it's a problem. Now, I will, I will say this, you, you're, you know, your comprehensive plan is pushing, um, the, the idea that, uh, on, on, on-street parking is a, um, desirable thing.
So.
In residential areas, I think in uncommercial as well.
So what am I, what, what, how would I modify my, my, how would you recommend my modification?
Basically, the way we normally do it, just, just so that we don't get into the semantics of it, is we say, you'll comply with the city of Laredo's parking requirements. Which means you, you have to have.
Thirty spots.
Parking.
So what the modification would be then, that we are gonna allow him to have off-site parking for thirty spaces?
It's already, it's already in the conditions, they already say he's gotta comply with the city's parking.
No, but you have off-site parking is prohibited, number six.
Yeah, right.
So what, so that's what we're modifying, we're saying, we'll allow you to have off-site parking as long as it complies with the space requ, the number requirements of the city, right? So that's how I meant it, that part.
Actually, with the, with the permit, it already comes the requirements and, um, and his right.
No, but I'm modifying the, I'm modifying the permit.
I would approve it as, as it is, once it goes to city council and they approve it, he has to comply with all the, uh, the conditions.
Well, let's do this, you're making the motion right now, you're trying to finalize.
I'm trying to, I'm trying to allow him to modify, so that he can have off-site parking.
So.
That's my modification, it may not get a second.
Your, your modification is to allow him to park on the street.
Allow him to park on the street, because you're saying you can't regulate that, but also, also allow him to, to meet his parking requirement from an off-site parking location.
He's trying to get to the thirty parking.
It's part of the CUP.
No, it's not, it's prohibited, look at number six.
Yeah.
Look at number six.
Right, no, I see that, but it's part of the CUP for him to comply with the thirty parking spaces.
Right, but what I'm saying is, and it can be off-site, it doesn't have to be on his, on his property.
As long as it's a thousand feet.
Well, wherever that space is that was there, that you all, you all pointed out to me that was unplatted territory, that's fine.
This is saying it can't be off-site.
Yes, I know, I'm modifying their CUP, I'm trying to modify their CUP to make him, allow him to get an off-site parking space.
Right, but that's not what Nathan said right now, so you can't park in, in the street.
That's not off-site parking, that's not.
You're not supposed to use the streets for commercial endeavors, which includes parking, okay? What I'm saying is, as a practical matter, it's very difficult to enforce that. So the way it's done is.
Who's car is what?
Right, we don't know, you know, whether he's, the person that parked the car there is visiting his establishment, or the guy across the street, or what. So it's very difficult to enforce. So the way we get, or the way we work through that. Is we.
I understand his problem, six is different, six is, six is, six is, I've got my lot here, and then ten blocks down, there's another lot, and I'm gonna put my thirty spaces on that lot ten blocks down, right? As opposed to, here's my lot, and then people park on the street, parking on the street is not off-site parking according to anything explained, it's using that space ten blocks down. And so what I'm saying is, if there's, is there's vacant property that is close, walking distance to the location, let's allow the off-site parking, so I'm trying to modify the proposed CUP.
I think.
But that is allowed.
Well.
Well, it may be more than a thousand feet though, that's what I'm saying.
All right, so your, your motion right now is for six months.
Six months.
To give him time to.
Find off-site parking that meets the city requirements of thirty spaces, that is more than a thousand feet if necessary, so the off-site parking restriction is being eliminated from the CUP.
Okay, so we have a motion, do we have a second on that motion?
I'll second that motion.
You got a second on the motion, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those against? Motion carries. Next item that we have is a public hearing amending the zoning ordinance of the city of Laredo by rezoning approximately five point three seven acres out of. Price tracks of abstract four ninety-six, the G O H Hall original, abstract six forty-eight, J W Cody original, then abstract six sixty, the D Sanchez original, located east of Casa Verde Road, and south of Lucia Court, from R one to R one A. This is a public hearing, anybody who wishes to speak in favor of the zone change, in favor of the zone change, yes.
We have an update, we have one letter against.
One letter against, any in favor?
Zero.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the commission, Frank Estrada with Sherfi Engineering, here to speak in favor of the proposed zone change and answer any questions the commission may have.
Any questions for Mr. Estrada? Thank you, Mr. Estrada.
Thank you.
This is a public hearing, anybody who wishes to speak in favor, in favor of the zone change? Anybody who wishes to speak against the zone change, against the zone change?
Thank you, um, good evening, um, members of council, my name is Sylvia Gonzalez, and I'm speaking on behalf of my parents, Antonio and Maria Castillo, who are present. And we're, um, they're the current property owners of track nineteen on eighty-two oh nine Casa Verde Road. We respectfully object to the rezoning to residential, um, for the following reasons, this property has been owned by my parents for over forty years. Uh, we currently do, um, utilize it for agriculture purposes, we do have animals there for the four H and F F A who have, we've been using that for that purpose. And our concern is that if, if the, um, area adjacent to it is gonna be used for residential, which I know it currently already is, we just have concerns about if it's gonna be apartments or homes, how, if neighbors are gonna complain about, you know, we've, we've had the animals there, we just don't want any violations.
They're proposing to do single-family houses.
And the smaller lots that were zoning.
Single-family houses.
So for that reason, we object, we just didn't wanna have any kind of violations because it currently is under agriculture.
Okay, all right.
Thank you.
Any questions? Thank you, your comment. Anybody else who wishes to speak against the zone change, against the zone change? Against the zone change? If not, what are the wishes of the commission?
Make a motion to approve public, uh, to close public hearing and, uh, support the zone change.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
And a second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those against?
Against.
Against, okay, we have one against, motion carries. The next, uh, public hearing that we have is a, um. Public hearing amending the zoning ordinance of the city of Laredo by rezoning approximately one point eight five acre tract of land, also known as lot eleven and lot twelve Casa Verde acre subdivision. Out of survey ten twenty-one G B and C N G R R C O, abstract sixty-four, survey twenty-one fifty D Sanchez, abstract six sixty, located off of Jacobin Road and west of Casa Verde Road, from R one to B four.
Mr. Chairman, the applicant requested to table this item.
Okay, do we have a motion to table?
Motion to table.
Second, all those in favor? Motion carries, thank you.
Is that I or H?
H. Next item that we have is, uh, public hearing amending the zoning ordinance of the city of Laredo by authorizing a conditional use permit for vehicle truck storage and business storage in lot one, block one. J D K, located at twenty-three nine oh zero nine zero nine, have a farm to market fourteen seventy-two. This is a public hearing on a conditional use permit, anyone who is in favor of the conditional use permit, in favor? Okay, any questions from Mr. Vazquez? Public hearing, anybody who wishes to speak in favor, in favor of the conditional use permit, in favor? Anybody who wishes to speak against the conditional use permit, against the conditional use permit? If not, what are the wishes of the commission?
I make a motion to approve the, uh, that the permit, the conditional use permit.
Okay, we have a motion, do we have a second? And a second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those against, motion carries. Next item that we have is a public hearing amending the zoning ordinance of the city of Laredo by authorizing a special use permit for a restaurant serving alcohol on lot eleven, block five seventy-three, Western Division, located at twenty-six oh one San Bernardo Avenue. This is a public hearing, anybody who wishes to speak in favor of the conditional use permit?
Uh, council, my name is Walgeta Junior, I'm the restaurant owner, um, I represent this, so. Any questions, um, I know we had issues on the parking itself, when I just, uh, first got this restaurant and opened up the permits with the city, they had asked me for twelve additional parkings. Um, I managed to get a twelve additional parkings at an off-site, um, two blocks down with Mr. Galos. And just some Friday, I was notified that, I guess it bumped up to thirty, um, and I managed to get a letter from him as well, um, stating that he granted me the rest of the parking.
So you have, you need thirty parking spaces and now you have them available, is that what you're saying?
Yes, um.
Was it thirty in total or thirty?
Yeah, well, they're asking thirty in total, I have thirteen on site, and they were asking, at first, when I started, it was twelve additional, now they're asking for seventeen additional.
So you need it, so you have the thirty now, right?
Yes, sir.
So you got, okay, all right, okay, any other questions?
I'm just gonna make a comment, Mr. Chairman, this particular, uh, instance, it's a, it's something that, that is, is bringing up on the, uh, on the comprehensive plan. That you wanna have, uh, like a, like a restaurant together with a residential and, uh, people being able to park in the street and walk from their house to a little restaurant, so this is a good example of, uh, of what, uh, the new plan.
Comprehensive plan.
Yes.
Yeah, okay. Any other questions? Thank you. This is a public hearing, anybody who wishes to speak in favor, in favor?
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and members of the commission, my name is Juan Ramirez, and I'm here speaking on behalf of my father, Juan Ramirez. And we're here, uh, in support of the conditional use permit for our neighbors across the street. And, uh, we're proud that finally we're seeing some improvements to the San Bernardo area, for the past few years, it's been going down. So, we humbly ask you, your support to go ahead and, and approve the conditional use permit, and thank you very much, and have a good evening.
Thank you. Anybody else who wishes to speak in favor?
Good afternoon, my name is Juan Lozano, uh, my wife and I own the property at twenty-six oh seven San Bernardo.
Yes.
I will not have to turn in the, the form, but I'm supportive.
You're, you're in support of, of the activity?
Yes.
Okay, alright, thank you for your comment. Anybody else who wishes to speak in favor, in favor? Anybody who wishes to speak against the conditional use permit, against the conditional use permit? Alright, what are the wishes of the commission?
I'll make a motion to support and approve the conditional use permit.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
And a second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those against? Motion carries, thank you. Next item is a public hearing and, uh, recommendation of a voluntary annexation and initial zoning of M one on a tract of land, tract of land totaling nineteen point two eight acres, more or less, uh, also known as Annexation Track One, City of Laredo Fire Station number thirteen track north of, uh, FM fourteen seventy-two and east of Pinto Valle Drive. This is a public hearing. Anyone who wishes to speak in favor of the annexation? Anybody who wishes to speak against the annexation? Okay, what are the wishes of the commission?
Just to, uh, close the public hearing, focus, the other thing that you're looking at, not only is the propriety or the, yeah, propriety of the annexation, but also the initial zoning.
Yes.
Okay?
So, right now, we need to do is close the public hearing, that's all we can do, because it's gonna take several readings, alright, do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing, second.
And a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you, the next, uh, recommendation is for it to go forward with the zoning of M one.
Yes, yes.
Alright, let's see here, where am I? Okay.
Lavo del Valle, second.
Hold on. Okay, the next one that we have is, uh, preliminary consideration of the flat, Lavo del Valle, is that right? The intended residential?
Seven B.
Seven B.
Seven B?
Oh, yeah, 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 yeah.
Oh, Jesus, so, so, so much?
It just jumped, it jumped, my screen jumped, sorry.
These are all annexations?
Yeah.
Yes, they are.
You know what's funny on mine, when I click on it, it minimizes the.
Yeah, that's what's happening to mine too, so that's why I'm struggling with it, now I can't even get it on here.
Well, you just put the, zoom with it.
I saw, you know that.
Huh?
You gotta zoom in and then scoot over. Yeah, I fixed it, don't worry. I fixed it, I know how to do it.
You don't, you don't.
Thank you, guys, I appreciate it.
Sure. We can send you some technical, it's, it's.
Instead of scrolling, just use the bookmarks. It won't jump back and forth.
Oh, but you know, when you use the bookmarks, it does still come out small.
Really?
But if you just click on the, like, where it says track two, instead of where it says survey, or. Survey's the one that makes it go.
But it removes your site, so.
No, well, I don't know, I'm clicking on it, it's.
Alright, let's, this is a public hearing and recommendation of volunteer annexation, an initial zoning of M one on a tract of land totaling fourteen point three three acres, and known as Annexation Track Two, the J O Alvarez tract, north of FM fourteen seventy-two and west of Pinto Valle Drive. This is a public hearing, anybody who wishes to speak in favor of the annexation, in favor of the annexation? Anybody who wishes to speak against the annexation, against the annexation? Alright?
Make a motion to close the public hearing, Mr. Chairman.
And recommend zoning. We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
And a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you.
Bring it to scale.
Where's it, where in the hills is it?
Go to.
What?
Right click? Right click?
Previous year?
Yep. Previous year? I'll get you that.
Public hearing and recommendation of volunteer annexation and initial zoning of M one on a tract of land totaling four point six five acres, uh, also known as Annexation Track Three, the Gerardo Rodriguez Track, north of FM fourteen seventy-two and east of Pinto Valle Drive. This is a public hearing, anybody who wishes to speak in favor, in favor of this annexation? Anybody who wishes to speak against the annexation, against? Alright, the wishes of the commission?
Motion to close public hearing and approve.
Second?
No. We have a motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those against? Motion carries, with, uh, recommendation for M one's over, right?
Yes.
Next is a public hearing annexation, volunteer annexation, initial zoning of M one on a tract of land totaling two point nine four five acres, also known as Annexation Track Four, Modern Construction Tract, and this is north of FM fourteen seventy-two and west of Pinto Valle Drive. This is a public hearing, anybody wishing to speak in favor, in favor? Anybody who wishes to speak against the annexation, against the annexation? Okay?
I have a question.
Yes?
Why are there no comments or anything, is that because that's fine to do this this way, or, I mean, in other words, there's no objection?
Well, this is just a recommend, a public hearing on annexing the territory, there's still gonna have to be a staff analysis that has to be done on, you know, utilities, uh, PD, fire services.
It's already plotted.
Okay.
But utilities will make their contract for water and wastewater.
All that stuff, so it has to come in.
I, I just never seen one of these before.
Consider the annexation area and the zoning that they're, so when you annex it, that that is the initial zoning that's going up to it's M one. Right, just look at the area, with that.
What if I'm not familiar with that?
Okay, let's move on, uh, need a motion, close?
Make a motion to close the public hearing.
Need a second?
Second.
And a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Alright, alright, motion carries. The next item is a public hearing recommendation of volunteer annexation, initial zoning of M one on a tract of land totaling six acres, more or less, and known as Annexation Track Five, this is south of FM fourteen seventy-two and west of Pinto Valle Drive. This is a public hearing, anybody who wishes to speak in favor, in favor? Anybody who wishes to speak against the annexation, against the annexation? Alright, wishes of the commission?
Motion to close public hearing and approve with the initial zoning.
Motion, do we have a second?
Second.
And a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Alright, motion carries, the next item is public hearing recommendation of volunteer annexation, initial zoning of M one on a tract of land totaling fifty-one point seven seven acres, also known as Annexation Track Six, Rosum Track, located north of FM fourteen seventy-two and east of Pinto Valle. This is a public hearing. Anybody who wishes to speak in favor, in favor? Anybody who wishes to speak against the annexation, against the annexation? Alright, commission?
Make a public hearing, approve, and, uh, make the recommendation to, uh, to approve.
Okay, we have a motion and a second?
Second.
And a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Next item is a public hearing recommendation of volunteer annexation and initial zoning of M one on a tract of land three point seven five acres, also known as Annexation Track Seven, uh, north of FM fourteen seventy-two and west of Pinto Valle Drive is required, okay, this is a public hearing, anybody who wishes to speak in favor? In favor? Anybody who wishes to speak against, against the annexation? If not, commission?
Motion to close public hearing and approve with the initial zoning.
Motion and a second?
Second.
And a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries, the next item is a public hearing recommendation of a volunteer annexation and initial zoning of B one on a tract of land totaling fifty point two four acres, and also known as, uh, Annexation Track Eight, Santi Seven subdivision track north of the intersection of FM fourteen seventy-two and Santi Seven Creek. This is a public hearing, anybody who wishes to speak in favor, in favor? Anybody who wishes to speak against, against? What are the wishes of the commission?
Motion to close public hearing and approve with the initial, uh, zoning.
We have a motion?
Second.
And a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries, the next item is a public hearing recommendation of a volunteer annexation, initial zoning of M one on a tract of land totaling one point seven two two five acres, also known as Annexation Track Nine, uh, this is north of FM fourteen seventy-two and east of El Primero. This is a public hearing, anybody who wishes to speak in favor of the annexation, in favor? Anybody who wishes to speak against the annexation, against? If not, what are the wishes of the commission?
Motion to close, close public hearing and approve with the initial zoning.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
And a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next item is a public hearing and volunteer annexation, uh, the initial zoning of M one on a tract of land totaling three point one six nine nine acres, more or less, also known as Annexation Track Ten. This is south of FM fourteen seventy-two and west of Civil Mine Road, this is a public hearing. Anybody who wishes to speak in favor of the annexation, in favor? Anybody who wishes to speak against the annexation, against? Alright, what are the wishes of the commission?
Hey, you're up, close.
Close public hearing and, uh, approve.
Go ahead. Okay, we have a second?
A second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next item is a public hearing and recommendation of the volunteer annexation, initial zoning of M one on a tract of land totaling seventeen point nine one acres, also known as Annexation Track Eleven west of FM thirty-three thirty-eight. This is a public hearing, anybody who wishes to speak in favor of this annexation, in favor? Anybody who wishes to speak against the annexation, against the annexation? Alright? Commission?
Motion to close public hearing and approve with the initial zoning.
Second.
Motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. The next item is public hearing recommendation of volunteer annexation, initial zoning of M one on a tract of land totaling fifteen point two four eight acres. Uh, this is also known as Annexation Track Twelve, north of the intersection of FM fourteen seventy-two and Vidal Cantú Road. This is a public hearing, anybody who wishes to speak in favor of the annexation, in favor? Anybody who wishes to speak against the annexation, against the annexation? Okay?
Close public hearing and, uh, make motion to, uh, to recommend the annexation.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
And a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries, the next item. Public hearing and recommendation of volunteer annexation, initial zoning of M one on a tract of land totaling two hundred and fifty-four point zero one seven acres, also known as Annexation Track Thirteen, this is the Hurt Urban Development Track, east of I thirty-five and north of Bob Bullock Loop Twenty. This is a public hearing, anyone who wishes to speak in favor, in favor of the annexation? Anybody who wishes to speak in favor? Anybody who wishes to speak against the annexation, against the annexation? Okay, wishes of the commission?
Motion to close public hearing and approve with the initial zoning of M one.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
A second, all those in favor? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. The next item is, uh, public hearing and recommendation of the volunteer annexation, initial zoning of R three on a tract of land totaling point one five seven nine acres, also known as Annexation Track Fourteen. This is north of, uh, State Highway three fifty-nine and east of Serrano Road, this is a public hearing. Anybody who wishes to speak in favor, in favor?
So, I have a question for staff, so this, where is this lot?
It's on three fifty-nine, there's an apartment complex on there.
There's an apartment complex on there, three fifty-nine, is it, is that in the county right now? There's a colonia?
I don't believe it.
Yes, it is.
Where is it, what colonia is it?
Uh, Tanquesitos.
The Tanquesitos?
Oh, yes, yes.
Yes, it's north of, it's north of three fifty-nine and east of Serrano Road, Serrano Road is the road that takes you to the Tex Mex, or actually Kansas City Southern Row Yard, so it's east and north of three fifty-nine.
What are the wishes of the commission?
Motion to close public hearing and approve with initial, initial, uh, zoning recommendation.
Okay, we have a motion and when the second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries, next item is a public hearing, uh, recommendation of a volunteer annexation, initial zoning of M one on a tract of land totaling thirteen point six two acres, also known as Annexation Track Fifteen. This is north, uh, south of, uh, State Highway three fifty-nine and west of EG Ranch Road. This is a public hearing, anybody who wishes to speak in favor, in favor? Anybody who wishes to speak against the annexation, against the annexation? Alright, commission?
Those are on and ones.
You make a motion?
Close public hearing, make a recommendation. Annexation.
We, uh, second?
A second.
Alright, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next item is public hearing and recommendation of volunteer annexation on the initial zoning of AG on a tract of land totaling seventeen point six one acres, also known as Annexation Track Sixteen, uh, Francisco Guerra Junior Track, north of State Highway three fifty-nine and east of San Carlos subdivision. This is a public hearing, anybody who wishes to speak in favor of the annexation, in favor? Anybody who wishes to speak against the annexation, against the annexation? Alright, wishes of the commission?
Motion to close public hearing and approve, um, with the initial zoning.
A second. Motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. The next item is a public hearing recommendation of the volunteer annexation of the initial zoning of M one.
There was a typo, it's supposed to be R one A.
I was just about to say that, I have M one and then I got, so what is the zoning that you're asking? R one A, okay, R one A is a single-family reduced area district on a tract of land totaling eighty-six point one seven acres, also known as Annexation Track Seventeen, Martinez Track, east of Bob Bullock Loop and north of State Highway three fifty-nine. Public hearing, anybody who wishes to speak in favor of the annexation, in favor of the annexation?
Good evening, brother of all authorities from, uh, Tech Engineers represented by Mr. Martinez, and just to clarify the, the typo. That's R one A. Thank you.
Alright, thank you. Anybody who wishes to speak in favor? Anybody who wishes to speak against, against? Alright? Wishes of the commission?
Motion to, uh, approve with the initial zone change of R one A, correct?
Yes. Okay?
Second and motion.
And a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, next item. Public hearing and recommendation of a volunteer annexation, initial zoning of M two, Heavy Manufacturing District on a tract of land totaling two hundred and ninety-eight point four two acres, also known as Annexation Track Eighteen. Also known as annexation tract eighteen. This is the Killip number one track, north of Bob Bullock Loop twenty and west of I thirty-five. Public hearing? Anybody wish to speak in favor? In favor?
Good evening, uh, Rolando Ortiz with Calum Development and we're in favor of the annexation.
Thank you, Mr. Ortiz. Anybody else wish to speak in favor? In favor? Anybody wish to speak against? Against the annexation? Alright?
Motion to close the public hearing and approve the recommendation for the annexation.
A motion?
Second.
And a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next item is a public hearing recommendation of volunteer annexation, an initial zoning of M2. On a tract of land totaling one hundred and forty point nine five acres. Also known as annexation tract nineteen, Killip number two track, north of Bob Bullock Loop twenty and west of I thirty-five. This is a public hearing. Anybody wish to speak in favor of this? In favor?
Good evening again, Rolando Ortiz with Calum Development in favor.
Okay. Anybody wish to speak in favor? In favor? Anybody who wish to speak against? Against the annexation? Alright?
Make a motion to close the public hearing and approve the recommendation. We have a third annexation.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Alright, the next item that we have is preliminary request. Of a replat of lot nine, block three, Santa Rita Subdivision into lots nine A and nine B. Block three, Santa Rita Subdivision. The intent is residential. The purpose of this replat is to create two smaller lots from one larger lot. The, uh, proposed action is approved subject to the following comments from the planning department. And water and utilities. And I believe a notice to the developer from planning. The engineer of record is, uh, Tech.
Uh, good evening, and represent the owner and we agree with the comments.
Okay, alright. What are the wishes of the commission?
Make a motion to, uh, close the public hearing and approve. The, um, the replat. Subject to the comments.
Subject to the comments.
Okay.
Second.
A motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Next item is preliminary consideration of the plan of Lago del Valle seven. The intent is residential. This is a twelve point three five acre tract. It is located west of Cuatro Ventas Road. On Loop twenty and south of the State Highway three fifty-nine and Concord Hill Subdivision. The zoning for this sixty-six lot development is R one A. The proposed action is approved subject to the following comments from the planning department, water and utilities. And a notice to developer. Yes, sir?
Hi, good evening, uh, Robert Garza on behalf of the developer. Uh, we have read a review and we concur with the comments.
Very good. Alright, what are the wishes of the commission?
Approved subject to the comments.
Alright, a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next item is the preliminary consideration of the replat of lot two and three, block one. Amistad Acres into lots two A and three A, block one, Amistad Acres. Intent is commercial. The purpose of the replat is reconfiguration of lot lines. This is a two point three seven acre tract located west of McPherson Road. And south of Jackman Road. The zoning for this two lot development is B three. Proposed action is approved subject to the following comments from planning. And, uh, a notice to developer from planning.
Webb County?
And traffic, I'm sorry. Water utilities and traffic. And Webb County? Okay. The engineer is? Okay? Burkhart Engineering. Proposed action is approved subject to the following comments. No one here from that firm? Alright, what are the wishes of the commission?
Chairman?
Yes?
The traffic has some comments. They want to speak.
Alright.
I think Mr. Senyu wants to say something.
Good evening, Robert Payne of Traffic Department. We, we'd like to edit, uh, uh, the comment that we made regarding, uh, the request for a TIA on that driveway. We have a driveway that, that's, uh, uh, located at the intersection where we have a traffic signal. And instead of re- the request for a traffic impact analysis, we would prefer that that driveway become, uh, designed such that only allows for, for one-way access into the, into the property. And it can use the, the other, the other driveway that they have access to, uh, for exit.
Okay.
Can you show us?
Yeah, I was just about to say because your comments were.
Go back a moment. Is that pitch there? Can you show us?
Driveway on the, on the, on the northern, the most northern, uh, edge of that, of that property is at the intersection of Jackman and McPherson. Uh, very heavily. Uh, high-volume intersection.
Jackman and McPherson?
Jackman and McPherson. This is the, the, this property is formerly the Home Run Derby.
Okay. Okay, I see.
And so we, we're not comfortable with traffic exiting that driveway into that intersection, uh, without a, without a signal. Uh, signalized protection. And we're not comfortable, uh, operating a signal for that driveway.
So there's two entrances, right? One in the north and one in the south, am I saying?
Yes, sir.
So another one in the north is the intersection of Jackman. That's always a, it's always trouble, right? It's at the intersection of?
Right here.
Jackman, McPherson, and you want that to be only a, um, you want a traffic leg at that intersection?
We, we just want a one-way.
One-way.
A right-in.
A right-in, okay.
Well, yeah, in, in only.
Or? But you could do a left.
You want to make it a one-way, in other words, into the property?
Into the property.
A one-way into the property?
Yes, sir.
Either way, right or left?
Right or left.
Okay. Um.
So what happened? We don't have the engineer here?
We, we just want to?
Well, they're, they're from the city. Their comment is, you know, they're, they're trying to, you know, their comment was, uh, they wanted a, a traffic impact analysis. On that driveway.
Yeah, I know.
But they're reducing their, you're reducing your comment out of say, you're, well, we're willing to have you do a one-way.
Access.
Access on that northern, the most northern driveway. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Well, the, the comment is good, and I agree with him. It's just that we don't have the, uh, are we gonna, are we gonna prove it subject to, will the engineer go with that?
Well, at this point, if he's not here, he's gonna have to go with it.
I did, I did speak to the engineer yesterday and I thought they were gonna shut because they asked what time it was going to be and all that. Uh, but they did say that they were going to do the analysis, but they were concerned about whether they had to provide it before the meeting or not. So I told them that it would be after. It gets preliminary approval.
I think someone here, the engineer.
Yes, someone here representing, I was in conversations with the engineer yesterday and I.
You want to come to the podium?
And, uh, sure. Mike Rodriguez for the record with Forum Commercial Real Estate. And, uh, I was in conversations with, uh, Karina just to kind of get an update and print out the information, attend and see how it went. And, uh, I think originally the, uh, the being behind it was if there was a signal requested, uh, an impact analysis would be required. Um, in this case, uh, just a portion of the property is going to be developed, so. Uh, they were planning on using the entrances and exits as they're currently being used if, uh, for the current business and any other business that has been there in the past.
Okay, let me see if I understand this correctly. You're planning to use the entrances? That are currently there?
Just one?
Yeah, the, the two, you got one on the north?
You have one on the north, right by Jackman, and then one further down south.
Yes, sir. And they were planning on using them just the way they're being used currently, uh, with the current business, uh, operating and previous businesses operating there.
Okay, now, are you familiar with the comment that the traffic department had wanted me to do, a, a traffic impact study?
Yes, I, I did see that and, uh, and, and that was, uh, being requested that, that I understand if, if a signal light's being, uh, requested, which there's no signal light being requested.
No, no, no. The signal. The traffic impact analysis is going to tell you a couple of things. It's going to tell you whether or not that, that driveway is going to be, you know, be able to be utilized, whether it's going to have to be signalized. Or whether the recommendation could be right in or right out, or it's a lot of different things. They have just told us at the commission level here that they're, they're proposing that you'll be allowed to use that driveway just as an entrance.
As an entrance.
Into the property only. Exit the property through that. It has to be strictly an entrance.
Okay.
Okay, you understand?
Yes, I'm, I'm, I'm on board with that, but I'm just trying to, uh, I'm, I'm foreseeing the future things on this project or, for example, the existing use right now. That's using, used as an exit and entrance as well, each one.
And I know that, but that's why they're limiting, that's why their comment is saying that you're, they're restricting that particular northern entrance to just a one-way going into the property.
And the south the exit?
Yes.
Okay.
South would be the exit.
In lieu of the traffic impact analysis.
Exactly.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Which is part of saving some money.
In the lot.
Okay, so, well, I guess just so I can, uh, relay that, would, uh, the other option also be available if they did, uh, want to provide an?
The traffic impact analysis?
Mr. Eads, do you want to come up and address the podium?
Sure, sure, yeah. Robert Eads, Traffic Department as well. So I wanted to point something out real quickly and, and kind of what we're thinking behind the reason for this as well is, uh, understand too, if, 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 if it is signalized to be able to exit out of that northern, uh, exit. Uh, whatever allowances we give for that exit, especially obviously the left turns coming out of there, you're going to take off from McPherson. Which means you're going to impact McPherson Road.
Yeah.
So we understand right now the conditions of McPherson Road. And because of this business, we're trying to mitigate that. And by doing that, we allow for those, those entrances. You can be coming north of McPherson or south of McPherson and turn into the property. But you can enter and exit from this southernmost point. Uh, becau- and that way we don't affect McPherson Road as a whole, because you will have that immediate impact. We are not saying as well that when it is fully developed, because there was conversations about property extending north all the way to Fenwick and all of that, property including this one here, being developed on that large scale. At that time, we were considering all options and, and that may make some sense, but some other improvements would have to be considered when that does happen. If that area is developed all the way to Fenwick, you might have some, uh, except deceleration lanes, um, and other improvements that have to make. At this point, at this time with this business, uh, it only makes sense to us for, for what we have here, giving, providing the options for entrance, safe entrance and exits.
Sure.
Uh, that is it, because, again, if you all, uh, uh, remember coming out of whatever it was, Home Run Derby, there is no signal. And so operating out of that, even though it's being done currently, is not something the traffic department is at all comfortable with.
I have a question. Just some clarification. So the, the entrance on the north, or the access in the north would only be for entrance only? The a- access in the south would be for both entrance and exit, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, yeah, that makes sense.
Yes, sir. And now where you don't impede traffic on McPherson, you don't have that?
Okay.
Yes, sir. You don't have to stop McPherson to allow people to make left turns out or whatever.
It's a problem now, uh, yeah.
Right. If, if there's growth, obviously and there's greater development, then, then we would come back and, you know.
We'll get to that bridge when we get to that bridge, right?
But at this point with this business, that's not what we would recommend as a traffic department.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Alright, what are the wishes of the commission?
I'll make a motion to, um, close public hearing and approve, uh, according to the, uh, to the recommendations, including the new traffic, the, the new recommendation for traffic department.
Hang on, hang on. Mr. Eads?
I'm sorry?
Did you want to address the potential of limiting that driveway so that i- i- um, the design ensures that it's one-way in?
That's good, that's correct. Thank you, Mr. Brad. And so, um, we're, as, as a traffic department, we're limited in, in, in what we're able to provide, uh, signage markings. Uh, the allowances or, or the, the restrictions without physical barriers of some sort. To impede somebody from attempting to come out is something that we would, we would definitely recommend, uh, being addressed. Because we can foresee, even though there might be signs saying, you cannot leave through this, you know, uh, exit or entrance point. Uh, if there's no vehicles, people will attempt this. And so we would like to see if there would be some sort of physical, uh, barrier to not allow for that exit to happen as well. And we can work with the developer and, and see what we come up with best, but if you only allow for signage, uh, we can foresee people trying to get out of there without having, uh, some sort of median or?
What kind of, uh, physical barrier would you be looking at to put in that intersection that's a ninety degrees going into the property? Would you, go ahead.
No, 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 go ahead, Mr. Brad.
Please, you're the traffic director.
So we have been, uh, looking at a couple of different things and there's, there's some mediums that, that can be placed to force you, uh, through the intersection. But, but that's where we'd like to work with the developer on this.
And, and the reason I ask this is because to me, if, if we're going to allow them to make a left turn, if you're going northbound and you can make a left into that property. Or if you're coming southbound and you can make a right.
Correct.
Yeah, I, I see it kind of difficult to put some kind of a physical barrier that would allow that left. I mean, the right is an easy one, right? A right-in is an easy one, but that left turn would become a little bit more difficult in my opinion if you put a, a physical barrier on it.
So there's, there's possibly an opportunity, uh, granting the fire department, uh, allowance for, for a twenty-foot rule where you could bulb out or protrude, uh, that entrance, uh, to discourage that or not allow it.
Wha- what you're really trying to do is you're trying to channelize traffic.
I know what you're trying to do.
Into that property in the right lane. See, right now it's wide enough for it to be two lanes.
Yes.
And so the tendency is somebody in there to try to sneak out through that, that other side. So you, you can do, you can do a variety of things. You can, you could put a median in there, one number one, in the, in the, uh, in the driveway so that folks know that. You can do a curve extension.
That would force a right out. Is that what you're gonna do?
You, you can do that.
If somebody gets stuck in there?
Well, it depends on how you do the median, okay? If it's an angled median and it pairs it down to where you can't, can't come back, then that's fine. In other words, it's offset to eliminate that full lane on the south side of the driveway. Okay, that's one that you can do. You can do a curve extension going up north and smooth it out so that it's rounded, so that you can make the turn in. It's just the people coming in this lane can't get out because there's a curb there. That's another way to do it. Worst-case scenario, if, if you can't do any of that, you can, you can change the surface of the pavement with raised, you know, the dippled things, so that at least when people are driving on it, they know they're not supposed to be on it. Worst-case scenario. So there's, there's a variety of things that can be done. We want the comment there so that the, that the developer knows that he needs to work with us to accomplish that.
Sure.
Because I think we've all, we're all familiar with, uh, the SAMs, where it's got that triangle thing. And it's supposed to divert you and make you do a, a right turn onto San Bernardo, but everybody kind of just goes around it and then cuts across and goes left.
That, that's one of the things that came to my mind. That's why I was asking you these questions right now, because I said, you know, I just don't see.
It's completely ineffective.
Yeah.
But if you extend that curb up to where you narrow that lane so people can't get out, it may be wide enough for fire to be okay with it. Also wide enough to accommodate people getting in. It just, it just frustrates them trying to get out. They'll say, well, there's a curb there. I gotta go down, remove, you know, go out the other exit. So that's all we're trying to do. So we just need the, the comment to, to provoke that, that discussion.
Okay.
Okay.
We can amend, uh, the, the.
Just add it on.
Guy is, uh, uh, into barriers.
In the motion. Well, that's either barriers or limitation.
If I'm amended the motion already. Call it a, a barrier or a limitation or, you know, limit lane.
Alright.
South, south, south side of the driveway, whatever.
Okay. Alright, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Eads.
Appreciate it.
I just amended the motion to increase.
Just amended the motion, second?
Second.
And a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you. Next item is, uh, preliminary consideration of the plan of lot twelve. Block two, D and J Alexander Phase fifteen. The intent is commercial. Site is one point four seven acre tract located southwest of the intersection of Bartlett and Sydney Shelton Drive. The zoning for this one lot development is B three. The proposed action is approved subject to the following comments from planning. Water and utilities. And I noticed the developer. The engineer of record is?
Yeah, isn't there a comment on the second page?
Yeah. I'm sorry? I'm sorry?
Is there a, is there a comment on page two?
From Web County, should it be replat?
Premier Engineering, anybody here from Premier?
Oh, that, that was a, from Web Cat, from the Web County President of the District, they were wanting to know whether or not it should be called a replat or not? Yeah, it's, it's.
Because there's already a Phase fifteen.
Because there was already a Phase fifteen, that's why we're asking from, to number one, rename the plat and it's unplanted property being platted for the first time, so it's, it's not a replat. They're just calling out that.
Alright, what are the wishes of the commission?
Motion to approve subject to the following comments.
Second.
And a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next item is preliminary consideration of the plat of, uh, Hidden Heaven Subdivision, the intent is residential. This is a five point six six acre tract located south of Shiloh Drive and adjacent to Shenandoah Valley Subdivision. The zoning for this twenty-lot development is RSM. And the proposed action is approved subject to the following comments from planning, from fire, water utilities. And, uh, notice to developer. Yes, sir.
Good evening, Chairman, um, members of the commission, Fred Muffinis with Crane Engineering here on behalf of the developer, and we concur with all of the staff's comments.
Alright, thank you very much. What are the wishes of the commission?
Motion to approve subject to the comments. Second.
Motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. The next item is the final consideration of the plat of block three, block one, Bazan Subdivision, intent is industrial, and the proposed action is approved. Wishes of the commission?
Motion to approve. Second.
We have a motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. The next item, amending the land development code. Article four, section twenty-four point sixty-two, zoning districts and boundaries to delete the title of B four zoning. Classification Highway Commercial District and to adopt in lieu thereof a new title and text. Which new title is High Intense Community Business District and creating a separate zoning district. From the Highway Commercial District Classification, adding a new title and text. Which new title is B five Highway Commercial District, providing for publication and effective date. Mr. Brad?
Is that this one that we have here? Are these the proposed B fives now? Or are they? So in the case we had earlier with the B four on the furniture, or would that fall, that would still fall as B four or B five?
B four or B five.
Both?
No, it's just.
So how about a bar, a bar in the B four right now?
I'm sorry.
If, we're proposing that everything that's allowed to be outdoors, uh, to move it to B five.
Everything's allowed to be outdoors, okay.
So the outdoor furniture.
So a bar would still be on the B four?
B five.
Whatever they're propos, all the uses that are currently allowed on the B four that are for outdoor display and storage, we're proposing to move them to B five.
And the new title for a B five, okay. So what's the purpose?
The purpose of the B five is to, to separate the most intense uses from the B four.
Does that mean that the bar is an outdoor bar? Is that what that means?
No, everything that requires a distance could be outdoor bars.
Whether it's indoor. Well, it's an indoor bar.
No.
It's just the uses.
Just a bar, the bar because it requires a distance, uh, separation from the residential, that's why we're considering it to be a B five.
Uh, uh, could, could you give us one example of something that is currently a B four? That under this would not be, I mean, I know you're giving me the list, but is there like a, like a specific idea of how you guys came about this or? I guess I'm confused.
I know that we've had issues not long ago with an applicant that came in and they wanted to do a party place, an outdoor party place. So they were requesting a B four, and I know the commission had issues with that because if you were to approve a B four, that could also open the door to bars and other things.
Okay, I get it, now I get it, okay, yeah.
But what happens, you're, you're done, Carlos?
Uh, yeah, I, I'm done, I understand now what she's doing.
The biggest concern that I have is that if we have members of the community that own business or own B fours. Should they be granted a B five automatically? Because, uh, what's gonna happen? They're gonna come back and now they're gonna have to reply, so I think. That in all fairness, whoever has a B four should be granted a B five automatically, and that should be in the ordinance. Because, uh, some of the, uh, and whoever comes after that.
No, not anyone who has a B four.
Let, let, let me go ahead.
England has a B five.
Whoever comes after that, then they can require, but let's suppose that, uh. One member of the community has something that is gonna be on the B four and on the B five, see. They have to come back and apply for B five? I don't think that, that's right. I think it should be grandfathered and, uh, and be given the B five.
Would they, would they be grandfathered in?
Yes.
Okay, so then that's off that.
But why not give them the B five?
Well, you, you, you're not gonna give everybody in a B four or B five, what, what you're saying is those uses that got moved from the B four. Into the B five should be changed to B five.
That's what you're saying, yes.
But I, I think, I think it makes sense for them not to be given the B five automatically, because if the owner changes. Would they have to come back now to get the B five?
Yes.
That's why.
That's the intent to screen it, to screen the, those, those uses that are more intense.
Wait, wait, but right now the way you, you said if the owner changes, do they have to come get?
Yeah, let's say, let's say, okay, so, uh, let's go to, I decide to open up a zoo.
A what?
A zoo.
Let's say I, let's say I already have a zoo.
You have a zoo, okay.
And it's in B four, and then I decide to sell my property where I use the zoo, okay? The new person buying the zoo would have to come and get this to be a B five, right?
No, no, your grandfather did.
Okay, so then the new owner would also have a B four.
Absolutely, would, would enjoy that use, that's correct.
Yeah, but let me ask you, what if, what if they wanted to change it from a zoo to a horse racing facility?
Well, then we'd wanna know what they're gonna do with the animals.
Okay, so that would be the example, right?
Yeah.
That would be the example, in other words, in other words, if it's a different business under B five, then they have to apply for the B five. Under your proposal, they could go from zoo to horse racing without having to come here, right?
Correct.
It makes sense.
What happens? What happens is that you can always.
Yeah, so what basically happens is you have a B four use, right?
Mm-hmm.
The B four use is for an outdoor furniture store, right? Which is not gonna go into B five, okay? So the guy wants to sell his property and he sells it to Commissioner Rouval. Question is, does he continue using the? Furniture store.
What if I wanna use a bar?
So the answer is, the answer is, he can continue to do that because his grandfather didn't provided that, six months have not elapsed.
Right.
Okay. But Commissioner Rouval being business oriented says, I really want a bar there. Before I could do a bar, can I do a bar now? And the answer is no, he has to come and get a B five.
Well, that's, I like that.
And do that. Now, the reason that we're moving these things, the way we're moving them, is, is that when we have had the, uh, these speculative zoning. Cases come before you, where somebody comes in with a tract of land and they say, we want this to be a B four. You do that analysis and you go through, what are all the possible uses that can be in there? Before you make your recommendation, correct? So a lot of those uses, there's no big, big deal about them being there, but when you get to some of these. Bars, maquinitas and all of that, there's a real hesitation. To allow that B four, or there's a struggle with it because it's like, well, it's, you know, right next to these neighborhoods or it's this, that, or the other. So if you put them over into a new zone, then everything that's in the B four is more flexible. In other words, there's less. Concern that they're incompatible uses. B five isolates them a little bit further and gives you a little bit more control over where those things are going.
I have a.
Can we address? Let me, let me recognize the public.
Sure.
Good evening, Rolando Ortiz, regarding this, uh, item on the agenda. Um, I'll give you another example. We have property that complies with a B four, that is B four today, that will comply with a B five. And now I'm gonna have to come back and rezone cost.
No.
Service, no?
You don't have to worry.
As long as the use continues, you're legally not conforming.
Okay, doesn't have anything there.
Grandfathered in.
No, no, but it's raw land.
It's a B four raw, raw.
He's right, if, if he's got raw land, he's owned B four, and he decides he wants a bar and this passes, then he's gonna have to come back and get a rezon.
Yeah, that doesn't, that doesn't work.
Not at all.
Well, it's exactly.
Can I make a comment?
That's where I come in.
Let me, let me have him speak first.
That's where I come in, that, that it should be automatically granted a B five. Some wording should be, should be in there stating, like what you're saying, you gotta be formed.
And I, I buy with B five, but now I gotta go and do the rigging again.
See?
And this would be the third time, because I went from B three that allowed alcohol sales in a commercial area. They changed it to B four, we changed to B four, now I gotta change to B five, next year I gotta change to B.
Six, seven, eight, it's never gonna change.
And that's, that's kind of unfair, we don't change the zoning codes every year. I mean, that's not, that's not, that's not, that's not cool. But I mean, I understand what you're saying. The other option is, I mean, um. We could say that the first zoning. From a B four, which was a, an allowed use into a B five, is for no charge, it just comes to the commission and, and it runs through. That's one way to handle if the cost is of, of, you know, substantial concern to the landlord.
I like that.
Subject to the commission denying it at that point in time.
Yeah, and, and logically, that, that, that kind of should happen too, because you, you do wanna take a new look. At where you're locating these businesses, because cha, conditions change. Now, they always come in with B fours along the highway, there's really never any relation. But there are other developers and there are other landlords out there that don't, and if you change all of the uses to a B five that are in a B four. Well, I mean, then you just recolored the whole map, you know? Because of the potential that any one of them may want to change to a B five. Most of them are happy.
Well, actually, that's the reason that I don't see any, any, any purpose in going to a B five. If we cannot.
If you're a B five, you can operate B four, but.
I mean, if we grant whatever has B four, granted a B five, then whatever comes in and they need to require to apply for a B five, well, that's fine. But right now we need to be very fair with the community and provide them what, uh, what they need right now, see, not create a problem for them to make business. So whoever doesn't have a B, a, a B four, they need to come by and apply, fine, but whoever has a B four, they need to, uh, to be moved into a B five automatic. We, we've done it before.
I, I understand what you're saying, because what you're saying now is that, um, everybody that currently has a B four can do these things that are in B five, in the proposed B five.
Not really, Commissioner. What I'm saying is that you have the, uh, the tops.
No, no, that's what I'm saying, that's what I'm saying, that's what I'm saying.
Yes, 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 yes.
If you currently have a B four. Do what's in the proposed B five, right? So you're saying, let's grandfather everyone in or give them an automatic B five.
Yes.
So that they can continue to use these uses, right?
Yes, yes.
Whether they sell it, they wanna, they, they wanna change from, uh, uh, whatever they have now to a bar, for example.
Okay, but, like, okay, so let me ask you a question though, okay? Uh, let's say you have a scenario where, because I understand the raw land issue. To me, the raw land issue is different, because you have no use right now. Right? As opposed to an existing use, right, which then affects the development around the existing use, right? So let me give you an example. Someone invests in a bar. And I think that's one of the, the easier ones, because that's like social, that's entertainment, right? And so then people start to develop apartments, homes, shopping around like an entertainment district or an entertainment area, right? But then, the, either the economy goes bad, uh, the developer, the guy who did the bar, uh, goes bankrupt, whatever reason, uh, uh, he's gotta sell this property. And so someone comes in that's new and they wanna use it for warehouse and storage because they don't have the kind of capital. To be able to operate a bar or to, 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 to develop that property in that way. But they're now automatically grandfathered in on the B five, and there's nothing we can do to stop them because we did this now. But what's affected is all of the development around that area, you see what I mean? So couldn't we say, let's do a. What they're proposing with the exception that if it's the same or similar to what exists, that's already existing. It will be grandfathered in, but if it is somehow different, like from bar to warehousing or. Something like that, then you don't get grandfathered in, it has to come before the commission. Or maybe they both have to come before the commission. The commission just determines, yeah, this is very similar to what was already there, we're gonna go ahead and grant it, but if it's fundamentally different. Then we're not gonna necessarily grant it, but raw land is different because there is no pre-existing use, and so they would automatically get the B five. Could we do that?
They would get a, according to the owners, they would, they would stay on B four.
No, that's what I'm saying, no, I'm, I'm, I'm saying in my proposal to sort of make this work, raw land being one problem. Existing business that you have development around it being another problem, and then a new owner who wants to fundamentally change what was already there being the other problem. See, there's three different things, right?
Well, the, uh, the idea.
That were complicated?
No, 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 the idea.
I feel it's complicated.
The idea of some of the, uh, of the investors and, uh, and community members, it doesn't have to be an investor, it doesn't have to be a developer, see. Some, some fellow, some, some community, some, uh, community members, they bought property at a, at the highest level of the zoning, it's a, it's a B four. And they're waiting on it because there's gonna be some development in the area.
Yeah, that's wrong.
Some changes, see, so now they think they have the top of the line and they don't. So what are we doing to the, the member of the community, probably being, uh, probably one of them an example. Is they might have some properties, now you need to come back because you can't, I can't buy from you because that's a B four, now make it to a B five and I'll buy. See, that would be an example, would not be, really, would that be this, that would be it. So why are we gonna hurt the community by? Bringing an ordinance that doesn't make any sense.
But that's only hurting part of the community, so I hope.
No, it's not.
We can, we can.
No, it's not, it, it, so I have a zoo now and then this takes into effect and now it's a B five and I wanna change it to, uh, to a rental place. So now I have to come back to the commission to get the B five, right?
That's what we want to avoid, we don't want them to come back when they originally complied with the ordinance to begin with.
Right, but the, but the reason.
Why penalize them in the future for doing the right thing?
Okay, let me just comment, because the reason that they're doing this is because they're acknowledging that. People will come for a B four to use it for a purpose that is not, let's say.
The reason they're doing this to move forward in the future from now, don't penalize the people in, in the, in the past.
I understand what you're saying, I understand what you're saying.
Okay, so we're forward, yeah.
Solution though.
The solution is that, is to cooperate with his recommendation.
If I'm wrong, but B three is supposed to be on expressways, major roadways or wherever you have it identified there.
Four was originally highway commercial.
Supposed to be that, in, in those areas.
That was B three before.
Well, you could do B three.
That was B three and then B three got changed to B four, and now we're going B four to a B five. And it's like, okay, I mean, it seems like the higher used intenses. We keep changing zones, and I, I know what you're trying to do here, I think what you're trying to do is separate, have more zones. With different activities, and I think that's what you're trying to do with the B four. The problem that I see that a lot of people are expressing right now is that.
Maybe.
Well, I had the highest, uh, business zone, and now all of a sudden, I don't.
Right.
So how do we handle that? Is, I think what I'm hearing from commissioners and from the public. Is there, I mean, how do we handle that?
I mean, if, if you've got a piece of property and, and it's undeveloped and it's a B four, I mean, I think, and, and, and there is a change like that, I think you have to look at what the B four has in it. And determine whether or not that's, you know, gonna work for, for what your, whatever your development's gonna do. Because, I mean, we've tried to keep just the, the, the really problematic uses in the B five. Okay, which are mostly maquin, I mean, they're there, I mean, all we're, we're doing is just creating maquinitas, um. Bars, a plant nursery, okay, with outdoor sales, hay grain and feed stores, okay? Bulk grain, veterinarian outdoor, halfway houses, tool rentals, outdoor. Truck heavy equipment driving schools, recreational vehicle dealers, mobile home dealers, furniture sales, outdoor. Major appliance sales, outdoor, heavy machinery sales, outdoor, used merchandise furniture. Portable chemical toilet leasing and storage, imported crafts, retail sale, outdoor display. Truck, truck trailer rental, uh, auto impound yards, inoperable vehicle holding yards. Auto auctions, hold on, hold on. Yeah, but they haven't heard it.
I mean, I'm sorry. Let's do this then. Let's do, hang on a second.
I mean, warehouse storage inside.
Let's do this. In all fairness to the public, okay? Because they have not seen what is proposed to go in there, I think, you know, what we need to do is we need to go ahead and have another hearing. So that they have an opportunity in the community to review what is currently B four, what is proposed to be moved to B five. And I would also recommend that if there's some way that we can go back, Nathan, when we add it to B four zone and see how we handle that back then. Cause I personally don't remember. Uh, that might help.
Sure.
Okay?
We can do that.
But I think we need to give the, the public an opportunity to view what's in the, in current, what is proposed, but, but, and comment on that.
Sure, and bear with me. These are the things that are only allowed in a B five, okay?
And granted.
Now, it doesn't mean, remember, we've got a cumulative zoning.
Exactly.
So everything that's allowed in B one, B three and B four are also gonna be allowed there except for, I think, housing. Single family housing.
And I get that and, and I think.
And I think even multi-family is not.
I think right now what I would recommend is that we, we allow the public to have their input by having another public hearing.
I'm having trouble understanding. So a B one, you could use the same use as a B four?
No.
It's a higher intense use.
Okay. B four will have B one uses in it.
Yes, 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 the other way backwards, yeah.
Yeah.
Except for, for certain ones. I mean, you know, we, we've taken housing out, single family housing. I think single family housing stops at B one, right? And then, or B three.
It's gonna be shocking to Joe, but I am trending with Commissioner Mingus for one fundamental reason. I want to get the B five designation created quickly so that that way as future requests are coming in, we can do it. So the way to do it is to do what he's saying. Now, because the other side of it is forget the use itself necessarily, like, like I have a zoo here. The other issue is the marketability of the property, right? And if it's a B four as it exists today, has a certain marketability that a B three doesn't have.
That's correct.
Right? And so it's more than just the inherent use of the, the, what's actually happening there. It's the marketability of it. So I'm tending to say, let's go with his recommendation in order to get this passed so that we can now start to have a new designation for future uses instead of tabling this and extending it over time.
Well, we're not, I think what we need to do is to be honest with you. I think we need a little bit more public input. I think it's kinda new to a lot of the public here and it's, you know, there's only one individual really that's looking at this thing right now. And I think we need better community awareness that this is being proposed so that there might be more people here to comment on, on some of the issues that may come up that we haven't even heard.
I mean, this is only, this is only the second time we brought it to the commission.
And I, and I agree, but I mean, I think we just need to go ahead and publicize it some more that
That's fine.
The next time that we have a public hearing, we, we will request public input. And then from there we move on.
Sure.
Can put it on the next agenda?
Sure. I, I, I don't disagree. We can put it on the next agenda, but we do need to have public comments on this thing.
Just, just something real quick with the chairman. It would be ideal if we could put it in the newspaper.
Yeah, we'll, we'll do that.
It'd be for big letters, so.
Yeah, we gotta publicize it in the, in the paper with it. Yeah, you do that anyway.
Yeah, we do.
Okay.
Okay, we're done.
All right. Motion to adjourn.
Motion, oh wait, we need to table the item, right?
It's just a discussion.
It was discussion only.
Sorry. Motion to adjourn.
All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Very good.